Yeah, somebody like.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to the work session of the Board of Commissioners.
Why don't I agree?
One day, October the 5th. Would you please call her all?
Mr. Demilia?
Here.
Mr. Aliva?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Dr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
And Mr. Wexler?
Here. Please stand and join me in our police department leading us into pleasurable allegiance.
Pleasurable allegiance. United States.
Thank you very much. Before we get into our thing, I'd like to announce that the board did meet an executive session this evening on illegal personnel and property issues. And we also met at the conclusion of our last meeting as well on legal personnel and property issues in executive session after the conclusion of the last public meeting.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes?
We also had an executive session on Thursday, the 24th of September.
And on the 24th.
On a real estate matter.
On a real estate matter. Thank you. Our first item tonight, before we get into our discussion on anything for next week, is we've, township has received a letter from the Soul, the program director of the Solar Foundation. It was addressed to Mr. Celia. And the announcement is congratulations to the township of Havreford for achieving the designation of Soul Smart Bronze. This designation recognizes your organization for taking bold steps to make it faster, easier, and more affordable to go solar. Suppose you will find your plaque a recognition of your achievement and commitment to solar energy. Soul, Soul Smart designation is more than just an award. This designation shows local businesses, solar companies, and the residents that Havreford is a great place to go solar. They're going to be happy. They, to help further work, we encourage you to take a picture of our community officials with the Soul Smart plaque, which we will do next week at the public meeting. We'll be happy to help you publicize your achievement, post the photo on social media, and we will share it with our networks as well. Uh, thank you so much for all your hard work on being a solar-friendly community. We hope to say, stay in touch as we help other cities and counties adapt programs and practices to advance solar energy. Thank you very much. Signed Theresa Perry, Program Director of the Solar Foundation. I'd like to thank the Environmental Advisory Council and Mr. Joe Celia for all their hard work to get us this designation, the national designation, through their hard work and efforts that we're the recipient of the bronze plaque and recognition as a community. So, thank you, Mr. Celia and the Envir, and the EAC. Very well done. I think we owe them a round of applause. On our agenda is our discussions on proposed ordinances. Go through them in order. The first one is a proposed ordinance on a code of ethics that's required in our charter or recommended to be put forth in our first class charter. Any questions on that, concerns, ideas? I thank Mr. Siegel. He put this forth back in December. Then COVID hit. It was kind of put on the back shelf with other businesses and emergency businesses that it's now making its way back from the ordinance committee into the full Board of Commissioners for discussion and then either future adoption or revision if we see fit as a board. I'll open up the discussion on that if there's any.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Aliva.
I have a real issue with a code of ethics written by us. Us governing ourselves. It's not really a good idea.
I can't hear anyone.
What's that?
Is your mic on?
My mic is on. I'll take my mask off. That way you can hear me better. I have a real problem with us governing ourselves. The state provides a code of ethics. And if we want to advance that code of ethics or make that code of ethics any more stringent, we need to lobby the state, maybe put together a resolution. But I, I think it's a, I think it's a real issue allowing us to make our own rules on our own ethics. If there is a code of ethics from the state, we do abide by that. My real problem with this is that we are going to have to enforce this because it is not covered by the state. So, it becomes, it's going to become a political issue. And, and I don't think that ethics should, that should be the, the way to go here. We are letting the fox run the hen house if we, if we allow.
I'm having trouble hearing.
Well, I can't speak. If you want me to yell into.
Mario, why can't, but we can't hear you. You don't sound amplified. I, I.
My green light is on.
Can you hear me? Over here? I have to make it closer to you, to you.
Well, it's taped to the. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So, I, I really do find issue with this, with allowing ourselves to, or, or make our ordinance governing our ethics. This really should be a state issue. This is something that the legislature, you know, the legislature puts together guidelines for, for commissioners. The commissioners should not be governing our own ethics. This, this is a mistake. That's what I believe. I, I, I would, again, if, if we feel that this is something that we should do, and, and I do agree, this should be something that the state should take up. You know, we should provide a resolution. But we should not be, we're, it's a slippery slope here. You're, the guys who are, who are putting these rules together are the guys that it's governing. This is a problem.
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President? I, I have to disagree. I, I think, as I understand, I'm trying to find the charter right now, as I understand, we are supposed to have an ethical, we're supposed to have a code of ethics and we're supposed to all, you know, sign a pledge to it every.
Mr. Holmes, if I might just interrupt. I, I've checked the Home Rule Charter. There is no requirement for a code of ethics. I mean, maybe somewhere else, but it's not.
We do have, Mr., excuse me. Mr. Byrne?
I'm not sure, but I think that, I think what the charter says is that the commissioners are to take an affirmation to a code of ethics. And, you know, whether that code of ethics is the state code of ethics or the, or one that we generated ourselves, what, what the charter requires is that there's some kind of code of ethics and that, that we affirm that we're going to abide by those ethics.
So, for 40 years since we've been a Home Rule Charter Township, we have basically relied on the state ethics, four pages of ethics requirements.
And don't we have to fill out a form? No, we fill in financial disclosure form. We don't do an ethic form. But I mean, we don't have, we, we, I, I don't know what's in the state, but I mean, we don't have a, a set rule on appearing before our boards or commissions. I, is, do either of you have a specific problem with any provision in this, in this ordinance?
I don't have any specific issues with, with this ordinance other than it governs the commissioners. I don't think it's a good idea for us to be making rules. If we, if we want to do this for our boards and commissions, I'm happy to, I would be the first one to do this. But I think it's a slippery slope when you allow the board to govern itself. This, this is not good. We should follow the regulations as a state and then lobby the state to put together a set, if we think it should be more stringent, and do that. We should pass a code of ethics for, for our employees and for our, for our, you know, the, whether we want to do fire companies, things like that. I agree, our boards and commissions should have a code of ethics 100%. But when you get into governing the board, you're going down a slippery.
But you're getting, people are going to get the wrong impression when you describe this ordinance, that somehow it's exempting us or giving us, or giving any members of the Board of Commissioners a break. I mean, anytime, any entity that passes any ordinance that outlaws certain activity or, or prescribes certain activity, it is by definition, by definition regulating itself. Every criminal law passed in Harrisburg governs every legislator in Harrisburg. And if we waited for the state to get around and do things right, we wouldn't have an LGT ordinance in this town. There's a lot of things we wouldn't have in this town.
It's a little different. LGBT.
It's not, it's not different at all.
Yes, it is. It's 100% different. You're talking.
Let's go through this specifically.
It's, it's totally different. You're talking about, you're talking about.
The purpose of this code of ethics, and I still have the floor, is to establish for the board and the township manager and the department heads and all members of advisory boards to establish certain ethical standards of conduct for all such officials and employees by setting forth those acts or actions that are incompatible with the best interests of the township, by directing disclosure by such officials and employees of financial or other interests in matters affecting the township, and by establishing certain responsibilities. And this comes from another township that has passed this very same ordinance and governs itself as well as governs all of its employees and all of its department heads. It then sets forth our responsibilities, which are to uphold the Constitution, the Constitution of the state, carry out impartially the laws of the nation, state, and township. It tells everybody to act within the scope of their authority, within the law, and work in full cooperation with other public employees and officials unless prohibited from doing so by law. It prohibits special treatment for anybody, including all of us. It identifies that we shouldn't do anything where we have a conflict of interest, and it specifies certain conflicts of interest in particular that we should be aware of and what we should disclose in pending matters. It says, "Don't use our office or employment for political campaigns for township candidates." And I, and I'm not going to identify the person, but we've had a problem with township officials who've come, who've actually wearing their official uniforms of endorsed candidates, which is crazy. It's something we should have stepped on when it first happened. We also say, "Nobody should appoint any municipal position as a reward for political activity." We then talk about the interpretation of the provisions, and then we close with a signature from Bill. How could there possibly be anything wrong with that set of ethics? If anybody wants to make it strict, they're great, but there's nothing in here that gives us any, that gives us any room to be, to be dirty. It doesn't give, there's nothing here where we're like, "Oh, these guys are just passing laws." It makes it easier to be, you know, to, to violate their ethic.
Correct.
And if anything, it sends a great message to the rest of the county and the rest of the state that we're not going to sit around and wait for the state to wake up and start imposing, you know, ethical standards on us. And I am particularly like that it addresses the issue of whether people should appear before our different commissions, especially the zoning board, because I've had a major problem for 15 years on the board of commissioners going rogue and showing up at zoning hearing boards and acting like they're talking for the township when they're just talking on behalf of a couple constituents, whether they're for or against something. And we've even had the embarrassing situation of two commissioners on two different sides of the same issue before the zoning board. So, yeah, I welcome this code of ethics, and I think we should adopt it, and I think everybody should sign it.
Okay, so, so now, I, I would, I, I don't have a problem with the code of ethics. I don't, and, and we follow a code of ethics. The problem is, and you pointed out Lower Marion, if you look at Radnor's ordinance, when they put their ordinance together, it ended up that the, that the commissioners started to govern what, what was a conflict of interest, and then it went down a slippery slope until they reversed their ordinance eight years later. So, we have, we have, you know, we have conflicting views of, of what that is. What I'm worried about, my worry is not, I'm for a code of ethics. Again, we follow a code of ethics, a state code of ethics, which we, we adopt. The problem is with, with this code of ethics, we are going beyond what the state scope is, and we are governing ourselves. What is, if, if there is a conflict of interest, explain to me what, what happens with that? What happens with, if I say, if my interpretation of what Jerry's doing or whoever's doing is a conflict, who enforces that and what, I'm sorry, Jerry, I didn't mean to point you out. Let's say, anybody.
No, make it me.
No, no, please, let me finish. If, if a commissioner, if a commissioner does what one commissioner thinks is wrong, okay, the interpretation of that commissioner is, is different from another commissioner. So, then we have five commissioners on the board telling a minority of the board what, you know, and then, and then what is the punishment for that? So, this is, you're allowing, you're allowing the fox to run the hen house. This is going to be a problem. I'm just, I, I, it's happened before. And this is different, this is different from the, the, the Human Relations Ordinance. Please. The Human Relation Ordinance is a gap in, in this state that, that this state doesn't, you know, have the wherewithal to, to adopt a Human Relations Ordinance and make things fair for everyone. So, we had to do that. That's totally different than governing ourselves. You're gonna, you're, you're taking, you're, you're, you're going, it's going to be a problem.
I think Commissioner Aliva raises a good question. I think we need to answer the question is what, you know, who decides what is a conflict? And, you know, give me an example of what a conflict could be, and who's going to be the judge and jury on whether there is a conflict. And some people think things are a conflict, and other people will not see as a conflict. So, I, I think it's, it's, it's very unclear. And, yeah, if you had, if you had two relatives serve on this board from different wards, they'd be in a permanent, permanent conflict of interest. Question would be whether their independence, whether their, their, their side dealings would have, impair their independence. So.
And then what would, what would it be?
What would the penalty be?
Conflicts of interest is clearly defined here.
So, is A, is B the specifics you're talking about, or is, what is A?
A is the standard, and this would be the standard anywhere. And any, any statute that said, that talked about a conflict of interest would first and foremost, at its core, be, "You shall not engage in any business or transaction or have any interest that impairs your independence of judgment or action in the performance of your duties." That is, that is the global definition.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Now, who gets to be the judge of that?
So, here's the specific, what's that?
That's, that's fine. I have no problem with that. Who's the judge? Who gets to judge?
Nobody judges it right now. We don't, we don't live by that standard.
No, but I'm saying if we had.
It hasn't been articulated.
If we had, if we had that standard.
If we have that standard, you're, you're asking us to adopt that standard. Who's going to judge this?
We have to appear in public.
Actually, I think when I first came on this board, there was a similar case that Mr. Lewis accused the commissioner of, and it goes, it, it went to a higher authority. It goes to a criminal thing. I mean, you, commissioners in the past have called out another commissioner.
I didn't, I didn't accuse him. I didn't accuse him. The Attorney, Attorney General, I brought to the Attorney General's attention. They.
There you go. A commissioner enforced something, which is what Mr. Aliva's argument is.
Yes, right. So, why do you need?
Took it to the appropriate authority.
Okay, but.
We don't, we don't make those.
Again, again, when you're adopting a code, then why adopt a code of ethics if you're, if it already, why are we doing it if we already saw it work in, in the case, in the last case? It goes to the Attorney General.
Because it's not enough. You can't talk about one thing in 20 years and impose the level of criminal conduct. That's not, that's not the answer, that we're fine at the state level because one guy committed a crime and another commissioner brought it to the attention of the, of criminal authorities. That's not our standard. Like, oh, it works because it worked once in 20 years that I've lived here. I mean, these are, these are real things.
I didn't bring it up. Bill was the one who brought it up. I was asking the question whether there was.
No commissioner shall, without proper authorization, disclose any confidential information concerning the property, government, or affairs of the township. Is there, does anybody have any question about that? Number two, no gift or favor, no valuable gift in the form of service, loan, thing, or promise from any person who's directly or indirectly involved in any manner in business dealings with the township. And then it specifically exempts, "The receipt of a casual business meal or refreshment shall not be held to be within the meaning of those provisions." So, we're not going crazy here, but we're saying you can't take a gift that's going to influence what you do. Number three, representing a private interest for any township, agency, or court. No commissioner or other official or employee should represent private interests in any action or proceeding against the interests of the township or any court litigation to which the township is a party. Works great for me. Number four, no commissioner or other official or employee who has a financial interest in any business entity, transaction, or contract with the township or in the sale of real estate, materials, supplies, or services to the township shall make known to the township secretary any such interest in the matter and shall refrain from voting upon or participating in any transaction of the making of such a contract of a sale. Doesn't even prohibit work with the township. It just says it's got to be disclosed to the township secretary, and you can't vote on it. Number five, disclosure of interest in pending township matters, and that's to the secretary, the township secretary. There's nothing wrong with that. I can't, and barring political activity, that's already a crime for federal employees. Why, why, why wouldn't we, why would we hesitate? Why would we hesitate to pass an ordinance that tells the entire world we're going to live under a set of rules that are all quite agreeable? And if your concern is that we're not going to live by them, that's all the more reason to pass them. And then if people don't live by them, it'll get, it'll get disclosed. It'll come out.
Thank you. Mr. Siegel's been waiting for, let, let me get him up. Yeah. Mr. Siegel.
Thank you. First, by way of background, the township charter requires.
I'm sorry. Can you turn that up? I can't hear him talking.
That the Board of Commissioners, the Township Manager, Department Heads, and the Administrative Service shall affirm to a.
Hey, Dan? Dan? I can't hear him.
She's coming.
Hold on, Dan.
Dan.
Yo, we can't hear you. He's like a freight train.
Can he see you?
Nah.
To the state's code, or whether we adopt one that is different is up to this board. When I drafted this.
That's better. I can hear it now.
Last December, I looked carefully at a large number of different municipalities and cities. Philadelphia has one. Pittsburgh has a code of ethics, for example, many of which don't really apply. Found that Lower Marion, I thought, had the best and proposed this. If this board believes that there are provisions that should be or should not be in here, that's the purpose of enacting amendments. It's certainly not etched in stone. More importantly, with the questions about how we would enforce this, and I want to make a significant distinction between criminal conduct and conduct that is unethical. There is a large difference. And as, you know, someone, as an attorney, who, we live under a code of ethics, that's, our code of ethics is very different from a criminal code. But, Section 7B specifically, the Board of Commissioners shall have the power in its discretion to establish.
Now, now I can't hear it anymore.
With respect to matters arising under this code.
Spike's up there.
The code is supposed to be the general framework that guides us. Nothing in this, I believe, I agree with Commissioner Holmes, is extraordinary in any way. But then, to enforce this, we would be able to enact rules of procedure if it becomes that. Fortunately, in my time on this board, I haven't seen conduct that.
I can hear it now. Thank you.
Rises to a level where anyone that I've served with raised, raised concerns of mind about this. But we don't know about the future. We certainly know some of the history of the past. But this is designed as a framework. So, if you don't believe we should have it, then you need to take the measures to remove it from the charter, which are different from dealing with ordinances. As, if you want to amend it, you know, we're, this is certainly not etched in stone. It's, it's a draft for consideration. And if you're just offended by it, then I suggest you go back and deal with the Gertrude and handle it.
Hey, Dan? Dan, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. So, my problem with, with this, and maybe we can adjust this ordinance, is that it's very vague in its, in, in how it's going to be applied. I just don't want, Dan, you know as well as I do that nine guys, you know the way this board was, and that's my fear, when we, before 2005, that, that Commissioner Holmes, myself, Andy, and, and some of the other members of this board who remember what was going on in 2005 and prior, I don't want this board to be able to use something against itself. That's what, that's my fear. So, if we can outline what these things are and, and its definition of, of, of those things, and then how we are going to enforce that, I would, I would gladly sign a code of ethics. My fear is that commissioners are going to use this against each other, and if this is vague enough, then that's where I have a problem.
One thing I might suggest.
Okay, Dan?
One thing I might suggest.
Yeah.
To address that. And I think when it comes to this code of ethics, I think it's fine for this board to oversee it when, as it relates to employees. But in terms of the, the Board of Commissioners itself, I'd be much more comfortable if our solicitor, if we have a situation where we think there's a potential conflict of interest involving a vote or impairing your independence, that, that determination be made, not by our township manager, because he's an employee. He, he reports to us. It should be brought to the attention of our solicitor with him rendering an opinion rather than, that takes the politics out of the equation.
I agree with that.
But I would like to, Mr. President.
Mr. Demilia, Mr. Demilia, go ahead.
The first problem with this, and all due respect, Dan, you wrote it. No commissioner should be writing a resolution for this board ever, and that needs to stop. It should come from our solicitor. That's what we pay him for. The solicitor should be writing what we're governed by, not a commissioner. Certainly, if you want to have input, I'm talking. You're not letting me talk, Dan. I let you talk. You're not letting me talk. You're not letting me talk. I let you talk. I let you speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Demilia. He's, he's shut off.
I believe that it's, it's, it's sort of what Mario's saying. We're being governed by something that's written by a commissioner and not the solicitor of the township. The solicitor should be writing our, our resolutions. Certainly can have input. We can say things, but he is the one that should, should advise us and, and write resolutions that we vote on, not a commissioner. That's number one. Number two, I attend zoning hearing boards, and based on what Mr. Byrne advised us to say is that we do not represent the township. And that's what I say when I go, when I appear. I say, "I do not represent the township." This does not say that we cannot attend. So, I just want to clarify that, Mr. Holmes. It says we can attend as long as we consult with the township solicitor. And Jim, did I not consult with you about Thursday when I appeared?
You really want to put Jim on the spot and ask him to say that you told him every single time you've been to that solicitor, to that board?
No, I was talking about Thursday night.
Forget Thursday. How about the 15,000 other Thursdays you've been there?
And you were there too. You appeared before the zoning board.
Oh, never.
I was with you.
Never.
Yes, you have.
That guy, when?
You have.
When? Hit it on the. Put it on the tape right now.
And so is Dan Siegel.
I dare you to put that on the tape right now. I have never been in front of the zoning board.
I was with you. Larry, I was with you.
When?
And I was with Dan.
When?
I don't remember it all the years that.
When?
But you've been there. You weren't there much, but you were there.
Much. Never been there. I've been talking about this for 15 years. It's wrong for people to show up at a zoning hearing board.
When you first heard it, you, you appeared there. And so did Dan. I was with Dan.
I apologize for my outburst, ladies and gentlemen, profanely.
And if I may, this note, when I drafted this and sent it out on December 22nd of 2019, as I do with every ordinance, I send it to, and this was copied to Mr. Byrne, didn't hear back. Usually I hear back if there are comments such as the reasonable accommodation ordinance, such as, I could count dozens. And therefore, to say that it's drafted by me without consulting with.
I'm not saying that.
Is something I have never done.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that.
Wait, wait, let me finish.
Twice where I have spoken, twice to address, explaining the comments of neighbors, I have done that. That's in this code, which is what, you know, it's basically Lower Marion's. And I don't have a problem with commissioners making that. I do have a problem with certain other potential conduct before the zoning board, but not if they're here to say, you know, 22 residents have contacted me and support this. But to imply or to indicate this did not go to Mr. Byrne is inconsistent with the email that was sent to you, copied to you last week by Mr. Berman on October 1st at 2:20, explaining why it was there. So, because of my sense that there were aspersions cast at that time, and it's clear they have been.
Okay. Any discussion, any discussion that, that I would have about this, I would not have over email with any of you. I would have that discussion in public, and that's, that's what we're required to do by law.
I don't think he's saying a discussion.
So, if, if something went to Jim Byrne or came from Jim Byrne, I would not discuss that, you know, if I had a problem with it. And, and the problem I have with this ordinance, I am, I'm speaking about right now.
Almost, I, I don't recall how many of us were there when the billboards came, but most of us were. most of us were there, and we were advised not to speak. The only one that did speak was Jim McGarry, but I believe most of us were there, with the exception, obviously, of Dr. Hart and Connor, who are not on the board, and Kevin, I don't think you were on the board then. The only person who did speak was Jim McGarry, even though he was advised not to, he did.
Well, I, I mean, going, going to a-
In that situation, with this, with the Code of Ethics, Jim McGarry's no longer on the board, but what would be the response, what does this do?
It would be, you know, he'd-
Yeah, what would-
Yeah, how do you enact it? How do you, like, how do you, like, what do you get in truck trouble for?
If we pass this, and, and, well, I don't want to put you on the spot anymore, Andy decides to go in front of the, in front of the zoning hearing board and speak, what, what do we do? What, do we publicly say, Andy, you did something wrong, or, or does Andy go to jail for 30 days? What, what happens when we, that's what I'm asking. I want to know what, what is the, you know, the consequence for these things?
Well, it says you can appear, but you got to consult the solicitor, you can appear, but you must consult the solicitor.
No, I'm, I'm talking about a different thing. What is the consequence for these things? We have a Code of Ethics, okay? If we want to change that Code of Ethics, my fear, again, I'll say it again, is that people are going to use it against each other. That's my fear, because it's happened on this board before.
I agree.
Not, not lately, please don't, please, it hasn't happened lately, we, we have gotten along, all of us have gotten along. But I fear that in the future, politically charged things could happen, and then what are the consequences, and who is deciding that? And Dan, I don't disagree, Dan has put together many ordinances, and I, I just don't think in this case, that we should, that the ordinance committee should be taking up ethics that are going to govern the board. I think it should be the solicitor in this particular ordinance, not in other ordinances, I understand, you know, I understand that, but, but this particular ordinance is going to govern us, it's going to govern, so it's like, the people who are being governed are writing their own, their own Code of Ethics, and I don't think that's, that's correct.
Mr. President? Mr. Holmes? Mr. President, might I suggest, we've got, is next week Columbus Day, our meeting is next Tuesday, is that right? Um, why don't we ask our solicitor to look at the Code of Ethics that's been put in front of us? Compare it to, first of all, confirm that other townships throughout the state have undertaken their own drafting, their own consideration, and their own passage of Codes of Ethics. See whether this comports with that, see if he finds out anything with regard to the enforcement of it. I'm not as concerned about the enforcement of it as I am the symbolic gesture of having a set of rules that we all agree to live by. It's still, it's still, at the end of the day, a political body, and, and, and five members of this board, and it happens a lot, and we're a wonderful board that gets along with one another, but there are plenty of things we do that are controversial, and that don't happen through the unanimous activities of this board. But to set, but if this is the Code of Ethics that isn't wildly more lenient, or wildly stricter, than a similar Code of Ethics, that similarly situated townships are operating under, let's get that opinion from our solicitor, and if he thinks this code is consistent with our charter, and consistent with something that we should all aspire to live by, then, then we consider it next week for passage, or consider amendments.
I, I'd be, I would be okay with that, if our solicitor is going to look through and, and, and see if this is what other, other townships are doing, and, and that these Code, that Code of Ethics falls in that, um, then I don't have a problem, I really don't. I'm just worried about using this, using this as a political tool, and saying, we're not outlining anything here, we're just saying, okay, well, this may be, you know, if this person works with this person, well, that, well, if five members of the board decide that they don't like this particular person, they can use this against them. And, and, again, Larry, please-
I don't, yeah, I don't see any spot in this, in this, in, I don't see that kind of room in this ordinance, but let's, but, but let's, let's get it. Solicitor Byrne, are you up for this?
Yes, I am, if I could just add one thing-
Go ahead.
And, and, you know, what we're talking about here, the, the first thing we, you're all governed by, and you're going to be governed by no matter what, is the Pennsylvania, the Public Official and Employee Ethics Act. And in that act, in Section 1111, it says that a township can adopt a, a Code of Ethics of its own, but it can't be any more, or any less stringent than what is found in the, in the Public Ethics Act. So, um, you know, whether you, whether we, whether we adopt a new code, or we don't adopt a new code, it can't give us any kind of pass, we're still going to be subject to the Pennsylvania Employee Ethics Act. With respect to the charter, and, you know, I, I did look at the charter specifically to see if there was anything that said we had to adopt one, and, and Dan, I think you read it correctly, it says, you know, we, we have to affirm to a Code of Ethics. So whether we say that we're affirming to the Code of Ethics, and, and, you know, say it's the Pennsylvania, that we adopt the Pennsylvania Ethics Act as our Code of Ethics, or whether we supplement it with something else, which we're permitted to do, as long as it's more stringent than what is in the PA Code, I mean, I think that's where we, where we sit as, as, with the law.
Mr. Byrne, could I ask you a question?
To look at what other townships do, and see if other townships have, um, their own particular Code of Ethics. I think the county just enacted one not long ago, fairly certain. Um, and, um, I know there was, I know at the time that this came out, there was a couple of towns that were talking about it, and then COVID hit, and, and everything went, um, you know, quiet, or whatever it went with COVID.
Mr. Byrne, good. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, again, one thing I want to make clear, I'm not against signing any ethics form, even whether it's from the state or here, as long as we agree on what should be in that. My question to you, Mr. Byrne, is, can we ask, if there's some points in here that we want to add to the state ethics code, can we ask the state to adopt it, and then we can sign it? Can we add to the state ethics code?
I mean, I think that's, I think that would be, I mean, I guess you could always do that, you'd have to get the legislature to, to, to adopt the Pennsylvania Ethics Act, it wouldn't be the, I think it's a Pennsylvania, maybe they assign some of it to the Ethics Commission, what they established through the act. But, um, you know, what I guess you can do is, you know, that, I think that's what the supplemental, uh, provisions in, in Section 1111 are, that allow for a township to have more stringent rules, uh, but you're still going to be subject to the, to their original act.
Right.
And, and we don't technically sign it, we swear to it when we take our oath of office, is it correct?
Right. And now, how does, and what is-
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to suggest, back, back to my point earlier, that I think this board, when it comes to employees, this Code of Ethics makes sense, when it comes to this board, I think it makes sense for this board, but I think only, it, it shouldn't be decided by our Township Secretary, whether there's a conflict of interest, or there might be an impairment of independence. That judgment shouldn't be made by this board, because it could be a political, um, a verdict versus, uh, somebody that is going to look at it from the law's perspective, and going to make an independent judgment, and that, only person I think capable of doing that is our solicitor, quite frankly. So, uh, I would, I would want us to involve him if we think we have conflicts of interest, or we think our independence is impaired, that, that be brought to the solicitor's attention, and he, he gives his, he gives his opinion, and it, it, that's, that's the, that's the judge jury, and, in this case, not, 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 not our Township Manager, who reports to us, and is an employee of the township. But I, I- That's any issue I have with this, with this. I appreciate that, but, Mr. President, this, nothing here empowers the Township Secretary or the Township Manager to make a decision, it's just a question of informing them. It's just disclosure. It's just disclosure. Because I just don't want the public to get the wrong impression here, because it's not up on our- Yeah, but, but again, if he disclosed it to the rest, and, and, they say two people think it's a conflict, and, and six people don't, the two people that do are going to blow it out of proportion. So that's why I think somebody independent, it can't be some, it can't be a political outcome, it's got to be something that's independent.
I totally agree with that.
So, in any way that's short, is that, it's done, it's done by the solicitor, not by, not by nine politicians.
All right, come on, you can tell me this.
Let me, let me make a suggestion, so we get, we can move on to other items. We're going to have Mr. Byrne look at this, make sure that, if you would give, what I'm not clear on, Mr. Byrne, is whether this is much more stringent, or any more stringent than the state board, than the state ethics code, if you could make that determination, provide it to us, your analysis of that, uh, and then also the additional question of what other townships are doing, if you could also supply us with a copy of the county one, so that we can take a look at that, and see how the governing property are there, and, and that would help me make a decision, I know that, and I think it would be helpful to all of us, uh, to do that, and then go, we'll move on from there. It's not urgent, this doesn't need to be on the agenda for next week, there's not a, there's not a gun to our head to adopt this, this month. Uh, if we get all the information, and take a look at it, from an ethical point of view, we can make an informed decision, and clear up any of the questions on, seems to be around enforcement, or anything, but I don't see it any different than the state code, right, as we see it now, so, but if you would make, answer those questions for us, I'd appreciate it.
I'd also like, I'd also like him to look at the issue of, of him rendering a decision, rather than this board or Township Secretary making judgment, um, when, when it should be somebody that's apolitical.
Right.
No, I agree, and I don't see where the Township Manager has any authority to make a decision, so.
The Board of Commissioners does.
The reference is the Township Manager.
Well, to disclose, so, so it becomes a-
But, but again, if he, if he's, if he's notified of something, then it, then all nine of us are notified, and then it becomes a political issue, versus an individual commissioner going to the solicitor, saying, here's a set of facts, you know, tell me if I have a conflict of interest, or tell me if my judgment or independence is somehow impaired, versus nine of us making that determination, four of us thinking, yes, it's, it's a problem, and five of us saying, no, it's not a problem. So that takes away that whole political element, and that's what, that, that's a slippery slope that Mary is referring to.
No, and, and I agree.
That's what I dealt with in 2005.
And I agree too.
We kind of operate that way, because we don't, we've been instructed for years not to contact the solicitor directly.
I'd like the solicitor to look at whether he is the appropriate person to, to do, to make, you know, for us as individuals, that we think there's even an appearance of conflict of interest, or a problem, or we think our independence may be impaired, that that judgment be made, the case and those facts be put forth to the township solicitor, and him say yes or no, not, not nine politicians, you know, different parties, you know, making a political issue out of something, when it's, when it, when, when it's not.
That is exactly my fear.
You know, if you feel more comfortable that way, I-
I am okay.
Yeah, I do too.
That was exactly my fear.
Given, given what I went, you didn't go through what I went through in 2005, Bill. I went through it, I lived it.
I agree, I mean, it's, to me, it's, um, we appoint the solicitor as well as the Township Manager, so it's, but he's got different Code of Ethicses and turnips, so that is fine.
We should strike the word his, it will be more general, neutral.
Think in generica.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's move on, then. Thank you, everyone, for your opinion. Uh, the next proposed ordinance, a fair housing accommodation, we need an explanation, Dave, if you'd like to give that, that's pretty much routine, I believe.
The, uh, fair housing accommodations was an ordinance that, uh, we started to look at last year. It concerns, uh, uh, certain portions of our zoning ordinance, that, uh, don't really address fair housing amendment, uh, Fair Housing Act, um, code requirements. I believe, uh, this was drafted, uh, in coordination with the Township Solicitor, and Mr. Siegel, and perhaps others, um, and it's been circulated to the board now for consideration. I don't know if there's anything else that, uh, Mr. Siegel or Mr. Byrne would like to add.
Dan, do you have anything to add to that?
Dan did send it to me as well, and you work with Kelly in my office, and, uh, I had a couple other comments today that we, we discussed, just, uh, I, I thought overall the ordinance was good, the, um, and I think that, uh, there's a couple things we might be able to do to tweak it to, to be even better, but I think it's something that we need. Um, this, this concept of a reasonable accommodation, um, has really, you know, uh, taken wings lately, and, and, you know, you really need to have some type of, um, system in place to review the, the, um, reasonable accommodation request, to get you outside of, as this ordinance says, the zoning and planning, but I think one of the suggestions I have is maybe we even include the building codes as well, so that we're complying with the, uh, Fair Housing Act, and the, um, and the Americans with Disabilities Act, because it is, it's an issue that, that comes up, and it, it comes up, uh, fairly frequently, and, and it's something we should have a, a, a body in place, or at least a system in place, and then, and then a body to, to make, to have a hearing. Um, I think the suggestion in this ordinance, Dan, is the Human Relations Commission, right? And, and, um, you know, whether, whether that's the right body, I mean, they're certainly a very talented body, and, and they would understand disabilities, um, whether they have the requisite, um, planning and zoning type knowledge for the rest of the neighbors, you know, that, that's a question, maybe, maybe we can address, and, you know, uh, as we go along, but I think this is a real good start.
President.
What? So, are we, is this something, it sounds like there's some tweaking that's down substantial, changing the review committee, is though, does this belong on next week's agenda, my question?
I, I think you could probably keep it on the agenda for next week, I mean, I, I think that, unless, you know, unless you folks want to take it up yourselves, and, and make some more suggestions, but, but I think the things that we're talking about, I mean, the, the, I guess the, the two big areas for me would be, one, expanding it so that it includes building code, so that the person doesn't go get his reasonable accommodation, and then goes to build the, whatever he's going to build, and there's a, you know, a, a door that's not the right size, or a ramp, or, or something like that. Uh, and then the second thing would be, you know, which body it goes to, and then, you know, and then, and then how, you know, where would, what would be the rules once it goes to them, you know, is, is it a, is it what they call a de novo hearing, where since the Township Manager or their designee is making a decision initially, and then they can appeal for that, would that appeal then start all over without including the manager's decision, where you, with your evidence, and you, and you would, uh, you know, have a, have a regular hearing, almost like a zoning hearing? Um, and then, you know, so which board would that go to, and what, what are the rules there, is it de novo, is it not de novo? And then where the appeal goes after that, I think the Court of, I think it says Court of common pleas, right, is in there, that, that would be, I think it's a, I think they fall under administrative, uh, hearing, uh, rules, is, is the way the appeals go, um, administrative body, uh, hearing, uh, rules, or local agency laws, um, is, is what would govern the appeals, but that stuff, I think that we can clear up pretty quickly, I mean, so if you want to keep it on, I mean, actually, it would just be an introduction, I guess, and then, and then, you know, we would even have an opportunity to tweak it after that, before the advertising, if it wasn't anything substantial.
Okay. Can you get us a red line copy by next week, that, of those changes that you're recommending? So we can compare it to what we've already read?
If I may?
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Yeah, I mean, I think all of them are valid, uh, to add the de novo is adding two words essentially in Section 9, um, and that's what it was intended to be, we can add in the references to the building code very easily. Uh, and just for purposes of everyone's background on this, um, there are reasonable accommodation ordinances all over the country, because it's a very fertile area of litigation, and assessments of attorney's fees if you lose, against municipalities or governments. Uh, so this was taken from a few different things, and I worked extensively with Kelly Hayes from Jim's office on this. The thinking was that the Human Relations Commission would be a good location, or good venue for an appeal, because, one, uh, it is more private than the zoning board, um, one of the concerns is that if you take it to a zoning board or a planning commission, those hearings are televised, and that, that was one concern that was addressed, I actually spoke at length a while ago to, uh, you know, Mr. Kane, the Chair of the zoning board, and he expressed that same concern. Uh, so, we chose the Human Relations Commission, and there aren't fees for the Human Relations Commission, because it could be deemed discriminatory if you charge fees for people who want the accommodations, and, and that would raise an issue, Human Relations Commission. What we could do, uh, and I'm thinking sort of out loud, is that we could refer it to the Human Relations Commission, but also, uh, require that a designee from both the planning, and the, or, or just from the zoning hearing board, also be made, and, you know, an ex officio member of the Human Relations Commission, for purposes of deciding this, or two members potentially, so that you don't have a, you don't, you want to avoid ties. So, those suggestions that I'm mentioning now, I think, uh, you know, address the concerns that, uh, Mr. Byrne raised earlier today with me, were things that Kelly and I hadn't, you know, thought of.
Good. Mr. Amelia?
That's my two cents.
So I think we'd all agree that we're taking this out of the zoning hearing board's hands, a quasi judicial board and giving.
The idea, and I suspect, and from talking to, you know, Mr. Kane, he was he he did not have any problem with it, and he's he is extremely well versed on the issues with reasonable accommodation, cares deeply about them, and, you know, I I think I've accurately explained, I mean, we had a fairly lengthy conversation on it, and he wants to see these things handled properly, and had concerns whether the zoning board was the proper location.
Okay, so the the Human Relations Committee will decide if it's a reasonable accommodation? So someone wants to build an addition and violate the side yard setback almost up to the property line, they'll make a decision whether it's reasonable?
No, someone has to, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not allowed under the under the FHA to to impede somebody's right to enjoy all the rights that any other person would have by, and I think it specifically says, I know there's an Attorney General opinion that really comes down hard on it from about two or three years ago, that you can't use zoning or planning to frustrate somebody that is is in a disability, in a disability status, or is a disabled person under the under the act. And I think that, you know, what happens with the zoning hearing board is it's a it's really a different set of rules, you know, when you go to the zoning hearing board, they have they have 60 days to schedule a hearing, and then 45 days after that to make a decision. And sometimes, you know, you can you can see if somebody has some kind of disability that needs a quicker decision in that, just the fact of making them abide by those rules, and like Commissioner Siegel said, if if you're charging fees for it and the person is disabled and has no no wherewithal to pay, that could be considered a discriminatory act, so. And it is a dangerous field. I mean, it's a it's a good field in that, you know, it it's trying to get a trying to accomplish a very worthy purpose, but it's it's a dangerous field for municipalities, and I think we really do need need to get this in place.
Jim, if we grant a request for reasonable accommodation, and there's things in there, if we deny it, of how you can appeal it, but if it's granted and the neighbors are wanting to appeal our decision, is there, you know, is there a protocol for them to do that?
Barry, let me move on to this question. What's the protocol for?
I was thinking, and I'll have to check, and Dan, maybe you know off the top of your head, but I think that if the neighbors were what they call affected property owners, you know, that are in the in the area close to the property, then they probably could appeal. I know in other towns, that's what happens. I've been involved in some cases myself where other other neighbors then appeal, and they could go through the same appellate procedure that that the guy who got the permit went through, so that they, you know, their their first step appeal would be to the Human Relations Commission, I guess. I guess that's something that's a good thought. I mean, that's something we got to spell out.
Well, I doesn't section 10.
Whether or not, you know, whether a denial is just a final decision can go right to common pleas, you know?
It it says in section 10 of this of the act, section 10 judicial review, any party aggrieved by any order of the Human Relations Commission may file an appeal to the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County within 30 days after the mailing such notice of such order by the commission to the aggrieved party.
I guess the step that we're thinking about here now is whether, you know, say the township manager or the designee says, okay, you're entitled to this reasonable accommodation, because there's a form that it gets submitted first to the township manager, then then the township manager would make a decision which can be appealed to the Human Relations Commission. Can can a can an aggrieved party, if he's not the landowner, appeal to the Public Relations Commission? I guess this is what I'm hearing is the issue, right?
Again, I'm sorry. We're going to let the township manager decide whether shouldn't that be the solicitor?
Right.
I mean, I'm no, I just think the solicitor is in a better position to understand the law than than the township manager.
Yeah, I mean, I have to.
There's pretty clear law, right, Jim, on on who's entitled to a reasonable accommodation? I mean, we're we're not.
It's it's pretty, people think everything else, Larry. I mean, it's there's there's clear definitions of who are disabled persons and those types of things. Then, you know, then comes the the million dollar question, you know, are are you being discriminated against because of your disability, or or, you know, or is it something maybe that you're just, you know, you want to build a 5,000 foot skyscraper and it doesn't have anything to do with your disability, you just want that, you know, you might be a disabled person then, but you might not be discriminated against because of that disability, and, you know, lawyers are lawyers, and they're always going to try and stretch.
But the purpose of the purpose of the statute is the purpose of this ordinance is to is to make this easier for the township. I mean, is to make this is to is to avoid the problems we can have when we just leave it to the zoning board and leave it to our regular zoning laws to handle requests that require special consideration, right? Am I characterizing that correctly?
Yeah, for make it easier for the township and for the applicant. The applicant shouldn't have to go through hoops that, you know, like a side yard setback is a good example because, you know, I might not need a side yard setback in my house. I may be able to maintain a 30 foot side yard setback. However, if I, you know, if I was in a wheelchair and I needed a ramp, and that ramp, the only place it could go is in my side yard, then maybe, you know, maybe a reasonable accommodation is appropriate at that point in time.
Right, and to make somebody go to Zona to be able to get that, as opposed to be able to short circuit that route and go somewhere where there are standards, somebody's charged with applying specific standards, whether or not there are people that can sneak in little marginal edges of the law, but basically, if we do nothing and leave it to the zoning board to continue to consider the applications, or better yet, we leave it to applicants who need to put ramps in their side yard that are going to go into the, you know, they're going to violate the rule. If we leave it to them to have to go to the zoning board, pay the costs associated with the zoning board, and go through that process and go through that time, we are potentially exposing the township to liability. Am I right about that?
Sure. I mean, you know, and it goes beyond just, you know, what you think of as a traditional physically disabled person, you know, there there also the law extends to to group homes, you know, recovering addicts or alcoholics, and so, yes, you know, it's expansive, and if we need an ordinance, we got to have an ordinance. And I think our ordinance, as presented, does spell out some specific information. It has to be provided.
All right, and when you say group home and then say.
So that's good, too. And it also allows for the township manager or or his designee, I think, to ask for more information if they think it's needed.
Jim, when you say group home and immediately say addicts or recovering people, there's also plenty of group homes where people are trying to mainstream folks with profound physical disabilities, and instead of leaving them institutionalized, you know, we're putting them in group settings where just four or five people in a home that are that are cared for, and those are group homes, and those are the same kind of people who need these reasonable accommodations, right?
It's all of that. There's a there's a there are definitions of what a disabled person is in the act, and there's also, you know, there's there's a lot of lot of case law that's that's come down over the past 10 years or so on this. And like I said, a very forceful opinion letter from the Attorney General telling municipalities not to abuse your zoning and planning power to to, you know, to put obstacles in the way of a disabled person.
Right, and our intent doesn't matter, right?
I don't I mean, I don't I don't mean to imply that we do that. I'm just saying this is.
No, but you.
This is something new that we need to adopt.
But you raise a good point when you say that, because it's not our intent doesn't matter. If just the effect of having to go to the zoning board to do these things is a chilling effect on people seeking these accommodations, then we've got a problem, even if our intent is wonderful, even if our hearts are pure, right?
Yes.
The fee alone.
That's all I have.
Which can be substantial, can do it. And so people understand, on the page nine, the ninth page 19, they're not numbered, of your entire PDF of the agenda tonight, are the factors that are generally being considered for a request for reasonable accommodation. This material, the attachments Kelly and I compiled from other governments that have used it and that have been approved, essentially, there are also, if you go online, you'll find that the federal government has promulgated a variety of sample forms to be used to guide municipalities, because if you don't, you really do find yourself in a difficult position. I mean, one of the primary cases in this area of federal court was decided against Mr. Berman's prior municipality before he was there, but it's a significant case, and it shows the risks if we don't do something to to make these accommodations.
Can I? I have a few questions. I just I was wondering, we could could we make these accommodations rather than going through another entity or creating an entity? Could we move these quicker through the zoning hearing board and waive the fees that when a person comes through with a disability, that we would move them move them up on our schedule and and waive any fees that we would so could go through the zoning board quickly, and there would be no no issue with it, but going in front of the zoning hearing board, which is a quasi judicial board, then going in front of the the Human Relations Commission? Or maybe these.
We have no experience. But wait, I'm getting confused, because we're talking as if you make the application to the Human Relations.
You don't.
You don't. You go to the zoning board first, and then you appeal.
You go to the board.
You go to the township first.
You go to township, but but the reason but it also says.
Designee would make a decision first.
Who?
And then.
Township designee would make the decision first.
Like any other request for a permit, and what, keeping in mind all the requirements of our ordinance, and the township manager, you know, with the advice of Kelly or or Joe or whoever else is involved, could could say, yeah, this this makes sense, this is this is a disabled person, they're being affected by our zoning ordinances, and therefore we should give them the the reasonable accommodation that they're seeking. And then, you know, if you have an effective property owner that wants to appeal, then then, you know, their appeal would go either to the human whatever body name. I know some towns use their planning commission as a, you know, as a like a, you know, a.
I mean, I think that would be better.
As the accommodations board, but.
Look at Stan's section.
I don't know that I like that 100% because, you know, they then you get into some other issues, too, with, you know, are they still are they still acting as, you know, as a member of the planning commission and binding, you know, you know, looking at the planning codes rather than looking at the reasonable, the FHA, the reasonable.
Right, Jim, isn't that just as bad as going to zoning?
What's that?
Isn't that just as bad as going to zoning if you go to planning?
I I mean, I don't like it. I don't I don't like the idea of it, but.
How do you how do you Jim, how do you like to go into the planning?
I don't get it, going to the Human Relations Committee when they have no experience with
codes of building codes or or anything.
I tend to agree. I mean, the way I'm the way I'm reading it is, I think Mr. Aliva makes a suggestion that would be an accommodation at the zoning board, I think. They they are our experts, quasi judicial or not, but they are the ones that we talk about in section four, paragraph C, review with other land use or design review applications. Well, the only people that do that is the planning and the zoning commission.
Exactly.
So this to get to the H to get to the Human Relations Committee, if you think you've been in, you know, it's there's been an injustice, if we if the zoning hearing board can waive fees if it's a true case of a fair housing accommodation and can fast track it to do that, then that's fine, but we have to rely on our experts. And it clearly states that it's got to be evaluated for other land use and design review applications. And that's that's the jurisdiction of the planning commission. So I think, and in conjunction with our Kelly works with both, I think, from an approval standpoint, that makes the most sense, but we don't want to languish for all those periods of time, you know, the 45 days, the 60 days, you know, to respond back. I think that's that's a reasonable accommodation. I think if we could put the language so that we can use the expertise that we had, I mean, it may be that the zoning board says that's a good use of a grant of warrants. It never gets to an appeal, and all well and good, so.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think that the MPC provides jurisdiction for the zoning hearing board to do it. The zoning hearing board has very specific jurisdiction dictional powers. There's like 10 different things that they can can decide. It's one of them is not a reasonable accommodation.
Okay, but but my it starts off, all these start off with a zoning request, I'm assuming, right?
Mr. President?
If it doesn't, it doesn't belong in the zoning, then. Go ahead.
Mr. President, Mr. Byrne, isn't it, I mean, don't we start with the fact that we have to take this outside of the traditional places that that construction and other work gets done? Because, I mean, doesn't reasonable accommodation?
One of the things that, you know, that the that the FHA and the and, you know, the Attorney General's Office have have, you know, recommended is that you that you can't make folks go, you can't use zoning or planning or traditional ordinances to just defeat something that would otherwise be required to be done.
So what you're saying, Jim, and this is this is what this is what I was trying to say before, so we have to go outside the zoning hearing board for this, as you're interpreting this, we have to go outside the zoning hearing board and have another body look at these and make a determination on these specific cases?
I don't think the zoning hearing board by law would have jurisdiction. I don't know that the the planning commission is generally an advisory body. I think that what you would need to do is if if you're going to use the planning commission, you'd have to say that they're not only the planning commission in the township, but they're also like the accommodations hearing board. So you would give them really two jobs. And then I guess the question that I have, what I was getting trying to allude to before, is is there some any kind of inherent conflict there between the being a member of the planning commission and being a member of the accommodations board, you know?
But what doesn't make sense to me is that, you know, Dan said that you you would put someone from the zoning board and someone from the planning board on the Human Relations Committee. Well, why?
Advisory.
Yeah, but still.
Could you just could you just make an accommodations?
Those are the ones that would know.
Could you just, Jim, could you?
So why would we go to Human Relations when it's either zoning or planning? I'm okay if you want to go planning, that's fine.
He's on.
Yeah, Jim.
Why can't we waive the fees and expedite it?
Hey, Jim.
You do is change the name of it to the advisory board.
As as Dan said before, can we?
The accommodations board, I'm sorry.
Can we put together an accommodations board that would have somebody from the zoning board, somebody from the planning commission, and then a few people from the Human Relations Commission? Would that be something that we could do? Because that would accommodate.
Kind of what, yeah, I think that would be okay. That's kind of what Dan was saying earlier.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
It's kind of a combination of the different specialties.
Yeah, I think that that would be best. I agree with Dan on that one.
Kelly Kelly Kirk is trying to chime in here. Go ahead, Kelly.
I was, thank you. I just wanted to kind of clarify some things that may have been misconstrued. There hasn't been a ton of these reasonable accommodations. They come up once every few years. I 100% agree that ramps shouldn't be considered an encroachment into a setback. That's something in our zoning code that needs to be changed. Group homes are already considered single families in our zoning code, so that's completely separated, not something that would ever go before the zoning hearing board at this point. Other than that, you know, it is the very rare occasion that we've, you know, had come up for setback issues. So this is something that, you know, maybe be once every five years, and not something that would come up nearly as often as we are seem to be thinking it is. That's all.
I I didn't mean to say, if I said it, I didn't mean to say that it comes up a ton of times here, but I could tell you that it's a it's a very odd issue in in the law, and and it's it comes up, you know, it comes up, it comes up, if you get hit with it one time, you're going to know that you've you've had a problem, so.
Okay.
It's worth getting the ordinance in place.
No, I just wanted to clarify this other thing.
So you guys are going to put together your suggestions in a document we can look at before next week?
More broad definitions of single family homes in reasonable accommodations than ours, so that that definition, which makes sense generally, raises issues. There was a case last year in this township, and it was it was eventually withdrawn, but it would have implicated our ordinance, and had it gone into federal court or something, we could have really been hurt financially.
Was it a constituent of yours? How do you know about that?
How do I know about?
How do you know about this this potential case? How did you hear about it?
It was a matter that was before the zoning board last year. Information was sent around to residents, I saw it, but the application was eventually withdrawn, so it didn't come up. But I did alert the commissioner in that ward about it, just so he was aware that that's an issue. And it was around the time we were drafting the reasonable accommodation. that's an issue, and it was around the time we were drafting the reasonable accommodation ordinance.
But, but they withdrew, the zoning didn't make, the zoning board didn't make the decision, they withdrew.
That went away, but if they don't go away, the attorney's fee is substantial.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to talk in public about specific cases, but...
Yeah, it's in the Ethics Committee.
Now, that was definitely covered.
That was good.
Almost made me say it again, Steve. Okay, so we'll, you'll get us an updated version of that by next week, is what I'm hearing.
That should be easy.
All right. Okay, thank you. Other, other issues, other discussion items, there's Brookline, Commissioner Committee Updates, Police Department Crime Update, could we just, rather than take a controversial, Chief, could you give us your crime update now?
Can I just do a, let me do a committee update, real quick, Bill.
Go ahead.
The police committee met on Wednesday, 9/23, we talked about several issues and ongoing issues, one of which is police training, the police budget, and the police tests, and, and future tests. Anything else you want to add, Jim? And thank you for meeting with...
Okay. Chief?
Crime update.
Month report for September of 2020, 28 criminal arrests, 79 traffic citations, 13 non-traffic citations, 60 written warnings, 316 parking tickets written. An aggravated assault on Unit Block of East Park Road, police responded to an unwanted person medical emergency call, resident reports that a guest she met online, online was now acting out after drinking alcohol and smoking marijuana. Police found the person responsible on the kitchen floor, he then woke up, started fighting with the officer, said he spit in the officer's face. He was charged, obviously, was assaulting a law enforcement officer, taken to Lancolne Hospital. Unit Block, 100 Block of Brookline Boulevard for another sexual assault, this is by a known person to the other, investigation is going on. We had four, four motor vehicle thefts, two from U-Haul which were returned, one was a GP, one was a Verizon truck that the operator or the employee left the truck running, it was located by GPS in Upper Darby. Unit Block in Hillcrest, a dirt bike was removed and unlocked garage, another U-Haul, so of, of that five, four of them are U-Hauls that were returned. We had 10 thefts from autos, which is starting to increase again, and then we're up at Parkview, Drive at the Dog Park with broken windows where people were leaving bags in their cars when they're out in the Dog Park, and, and so we're taking steps once again to address that. A couple of bicycle thefts, two of them from Harrah for College, and we had three K-9 usages. So I hate to say business is picking up, but we're getting busier now that the COVID is, I wouldn't say settling down, but people are getting out more, so you can see with the crime update, there's, there's an uptick of what we've been doing, so.
Chief, it also seems traffic has picked up a lot?
Yes, absolutely, and that, you bring something up, I spoke to Commissioner D'Amelio and Commissioner Aliva, we've been having problems with the lights on Westchester Pike again, which is not our problem, it's a state operated system, right now, it's still, I guess, in the, in the warranty phase, we have, the problem is, we can't address it directly, we have to call, we notify the state, the state then notifies the electrician to put it in, they then notify the company who does the timing on it, so it's, it's, it's been back and forth for...
Yeah.
It's really been very difficult.
Seems like Eagle and Darby is bad, and Hathaway, and it seems like Manoa and Westchester Pike is really...
No, and Westchester Pike is bad.
Yeah, well, anything on Westchester Pike's been a problem, it's, it was working well for a long period of time, and then it just, it hit the skids again. So we, Friday, we had two officers out there, Mary had called me, and we were aware of it, we've been getting multiple calls, we had two officers out there directing traffic, it was so bad, but Eagle and Darby, two Eagle and Darby we haven't touched, it's just an increase in traffic we're seeing again. I think everybody got, everybody got used to getting in the car and not seeing any traffic and drive where you wanted to go, but things, people are back on the road again, so.
Can I ask you a question about these traffic lights?
Yes.
Because in, in my ward, and Mary's, we're really being affected by it, I don't know what's happening in Dan's ward, too, if you can further down. What's the ETA? I mean, are they just, it's under warranty, are they...
No, no, they're, they're, they are responsive, but when we, we call, we have to call Armor Electric, and then they in fact call their subcontractor, but on Friday when we had the problem, they were there within the hour, and they can monitor this stuff online also, so they can actually go into the system and see what's going on, but whatever happened that, I guess, Eagle and Westchester and Glendale and Westchester, he's, you'll, you'll see the black truck on the Meadow Strip, that's the gentleman who does the timing, he's up there trying to tweak it.
They're gonna come back out, right?
Yeah, we, we go on the phone with them first thing tomorrow morning, but it seems that all Westchester Pike is acting up.
I mean, I knew it was backing up all the way almost into Bill's ward.
Well, I was, what I told you earlier, at 3:30, Glendale Road was back to well past Greenbrier Lane, and this was only at 3:30 before traffic even picked up.
A lot of strange things happen, like, in the middle of the night, I pass by, if not in the middle of the night, 11 o'clock at night, you're driving down, and you stop at Country Club Lane where there's no cars and the Dunkin' Donuts is closed, you sit there for 45 seconds, you go to the next traffic light and the left turn signal is on for 30 seconds, and there's no cars in the turn signal.
It's, the design of the system is, it's supposed to read what's there, it was working for the period, a long period of time.
It was working great.
After, after the initial problems with it, but it was really good, and then, I, I don't have an answer for you, so we're, we are on top of it, we just call them constantly, but, yeah.
I was getting to the blue route, it was great. When, when it first came online, for the first couple of months it came online, no problems at all, it was really moving traffic.
Our, our contact with the state, who manages Delaware County, he, when we tell him, he's really on top of it very quickly, but Joe usually makes the phone calls with one of the lieutenants, and, but he'll get out there, so tomorrow morning we'll be on the phone with him, begin to look at all the bike.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
The other discussion item is the Brookline school status, is there anything to report from either Dr. Hart or the Property Committee at this time, or?
We'll have our report, we'll have a report in November.
Okay. All right, very good. Next week, there's two second readings, one cell tower traffic, another traffic first reading, contract awards, I believe the bids were open, and you should have received an email on the scathing bid opening this afternoon, and then bids will be open, I guess, tomorrow on the certain emergency sewer repairs. Contract with finance, another two-year renewal with High State Financial Group, and continue engagement with Jennifer Brown. Any questions on anything for next week? No questions? We stand adjourned.